The meeting will now come to order. We are now holding the March Meeting of Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Tonight, we have some WTCC students that are going to be leading us in the pledge, so would you please stand as they lead us?
I'd like to wish you a good evening and thank you for having us this evening, President, Board Members, Dr. Hodges, and Cabinet. It's always a privilege to share some of our outstanding students with you. And tonight, I have three young men who are going to tell you their names and about themselves, and then we'll be up to share with you some updates.
Hi, I'm TJ Phillips. I'm a senior at Connersville High School. I'm 18. I'm taking Precision Machining over at the WTCC Center. I really enjoyed it. Mr. Beaver is a great teacher, and all the staff there is awesome. Going to the WTCC Center has really opened my eyes to what I really want to do, and that's mechanical engineering. I'm going to Purdue Richmond and pursuing that degree. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marvin Johnson, and this is my second year. I am a senior at Connersville High School. I am enrolled in Interactive Media and Graphic Design, led by Mrs. Shep. She's a wonderful teacher. Yeah, that class, mostly what we do is brochures, magazines, make designs for coupons and other things, and I'm planning on enrolling in IUPUI and majoring in graphic design.
I'm Austin Ballier. I'm from Rushville Consolidated High School. I'm a junior, and I attend the welding class at WTCC, and my instructor is Mr. Beadle. I'm in a program called Skills USA. I'm currently a state officer intern, and I'm running to be a state officer for next year, and I will be running for national officer soon. And I plan on doing my education further after school, something to do with welding, I'm sure you have those.
We're passing around handout. Looks like it's made its way all the way around the table. The first graphs and charts you see in there review the current enrollment and past enrollment of the Career Center. So I won't review those, they're pretty self-explanatory. I'll just state that we're pleased to have 541 students on count day this year, and keeping our numbers up over 500. The last sheet I'd like to draw your attention to is what we've accomplished this year. It seems the six sending high schools have rather large sophomore classes, so we've had quite a success in talking to 1,222 sophomores. And 400 of those visited the Career Center. And the weather got to Lincoln High School and Rushville, they didn't make it on their visitation, but they have several students sending in enrollment forms at this time. So the future looks bright for next year. I feel confident that we'll certainly be at the 500 or more, and it may just be a banner year as well. We'll see in the fall when August comes around. The programs tonight, as I go through those, looks like we didn't have the slides at the beginning, so bear with me a moment here. We have 16 instructors at the Career Center, 13 programs. Dr. Bear, could we turn the light down? Thank you. Okay, this is the state of the school. Things keep changing each year for the better, and as I go through these slides, I'll have to be brief because my time is short this evening. I'll start with Health Science Education. This provides entry level to prepare students in health career jobs such as certified nursing, and prepares them for post-secondary education. In 2013, of the seniors, 99% earned their certificates as nursing assistants, and before the end of the school year, 75% were working in CNAs. So Nancy Redd, Lisa Harrison, Jamea Bowe do an excellent job with these students. They receive six dual credits with Ivy Tech should they pursue a post-secondary degree within. And our HOSA, our Health Careers Occupation Club, is very active. There'll be a slide later to show you some pictures. They participate in breast awareness, cystic fibrosis, Christmas and Halloween party for Head Start, and the annual blood drive, and some other things as well. School Health Careers is very active, it's our largest program at the Career Center. Decent mechanics, had quite an addition last year. We purchased an 18-wheeler so the students really get hands-on. And these students are working on power generation, transportation, manufacturing, industrial maintenance, agriculture maintenance, and aviation. So Mr. Rod Richardson is the instructor in that program, and this is one of our most heavily enrolled programs at the Career Center, so much so that we have to have an educational assistant with Rod half a day. Cosmetology prepares students for the Skills USA each year, and they follow the requirements of the Indiana State Board for cosmetology for approval and licensing. And to do that, we began a summer session last, two years ago. We've had two summers so far, and it's worked really well. That summer session allows these students to ride the bus and be here with the other students at the same time. Very high completion rate in cosmetology. Interactive Media and Graphic Designs, I have to be careful I don't make a mistake here because Beth is with us this evening. And Beth does a great job in graphic design, and that does rank number 15 in the Indiana Top 50 Jobs. They cover such things as photography, desktop publishing, web design, animation, digital enhancement, graphic illustration, and videos. Cooperative Education, this is Ryan Lynch, our co-op coordinator in his second year. I talked to Ryan this week, and he has 60-some students out, and they range from Connersville to Richmond to Moorestown to Cincinnati, and of course, here in Connersville, we have several places. A large number of these students remain with their employers after graduation, and the employers help them with their college and further training, so our co-op program's going along quite well. Computer Repair and Networking, our new instructor there, Mr. Gerald Shaw, prepares students for the A+ and Network Plus certifications that will help him succeed, them succeed in information technology, very popular program, and it's going quite well. Precision Machining, Mr. Rick Beaver is our instructor there. 16 students graduated last year, 14 of them are employed full-time. 12 of them are receiving tuition reimbursement from their employers. This is one of our banner programs for success and testimonials, so we have companies kind of waiting for Mr. Beaver to turn out more students, so good program. Early Childhood Education, in his second year at full-time, Jamie Rose has really taken that program off to a great start. It's housed, as you know, at the daycare. There are six students who will be competing in state skills competition this year, and there's nine dual credits there. They currently use MyBigCampus for student engagement and technology. And our professional development this evening happened to be on MyBigCampus, and Jamie was the presenter, so our staff is now all getting involved in Big Campus. That just took place this evening. Auto Collision Technology, Mr. Ergang is constantly working with employers who want students that have grasped the industry. It's designed to provide hands-on career training. They work with hammers, tools of all sorts, and bodywork, fillers, sanding, everything, the skills that are needed are taught in this program, and his students are grabbed up to if they're recommended for placement. Mr. Sargent is residential and commercial wiring instructor. Their class currently has three students on co-op, two in the maintenance area, so we have some of our students working for Fayette County School Corporation. Three students will be competing in skills. Mr. Sargent has had state winners at skills contests in the last few years. He's also working, works close with Mr. Grant, and working on the project at Union County High School, and on remodeling the restrooms down in that building this year. Our AutoTech program stands out especially for its certification. Both the program is certified from DATEF, and students can take a test upon completing the program and be certified themselves. That gives them a great advantage over others who are looking for employment. Currently, we have articulation agreements with three post-secondary schools in AutoTech, not just Ivy Tech, but University of Northwestern of Ohio and the Universal Technical Institute, where students can receive up to 18 credits. AutoTech's going quite well, busy place. Construction Technology, regretfully, Mr. Grant is retiring this year. Mr. Grant has quite a history of building several homes in our community and working all over the county with our students. More carpenters are retiring and joining, leaving the workforce, so there are job openings. There's been a lot of projects, but this year, they're working on their own building, and they're also working in Union County to help them with the building. Too many projects to go through all those. They've done quite a bit for the city and the school corporation. Welding Technology, Mr. Beadle is our instructor there. He is one of very few, maybe the only one in the state, that's certified as an AWS test site. He can give the tests to the students when they finish, and they can leave a high school program certified by the American Welding Society, and that's quite an accomplishment. So Mr. Beadle's program's very well-equipped. We spent years improving the programs at the Career Center. Sometime, if you'd like, stop by, we could show you what we've done up there. It's a great program. Culinary Arts, maybe all of you have sampled some of the food in our restaurant, but students in the culinary program learn the art of hospitality, restaurant management, lodging. Classes act as open Tuesday through Friday, and they also host many special events. Project Lead the Way is another hat that's worn by both Beth Shank and Rick Beaver. They have students enrolled in the final four courses of Project Lead the Way. Feeding to our school, it's slowly growing, where we have more and more students that are pursuing engineering. What I have here in my last two slides, I have a picture here of our Skills USA students. Approximately 40 will compete this year in the state contest, which is this weekend, so it's coming up right away this weekend. Throughout the year, they participate in leadership activities as well. So here, we have some pictures of them from this year, where they were involved in different activities. Our second organization, of course, is HOSA, our Health Careers Organization. This is a picture of them at Fall Leadership Camp, and we have 14 of these folks going to state competition this spring as well. So there's a lot going on at the Career Center. It's hard for me to cover everything in 10 minutes, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. I also could have brought a lot more students that we're proud of, but these three young men, I thought, represented a cross-section of what we have at the Career Center, so we're very pleased with the facility, the staff, and the students. Will all three of you be competing this weekend?
I will.
I will also.
Two of them.
Two.
C and Z program.
Well, we certainly wish you lots of luck.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Proud of you guys.
Well, I know you have students, some students that intern, not just with Mr. Lynch, but throughout the program. Are any of these three of them interning?
Yes, after spring break, I find a intern, well, not intern, but co-op with Stan.
Our internship programs are clinicals through health careers and through our early childhood education program. I'm not going to deny any of those students here tonight, but yes, they look.
I may have the terminology wrong, but I thought TJ was going to be working at Stan over there. I think that, you know, we, the quality of student that we put out in the workforce is such that it helps keep a great reputation for the Career Center. And when we talk about new businesses coming to town and services that we can offer, WTC is certainly a highlight to talk about, the skills kids are equipped with when they exit that program.
I give that credit to the instructors, they really have a handle on what's required in entry-level skills, and they were really close with these employers all across the country, not just in machining. You're right, that's a great testimony for our program to have successful students. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for being here, students. I appreciate you being here. I think while he's passing out the goodies, we'll go ahead and move on. We need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
The agenda is submitted.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 2/11/14 and the executive minutes of 2/11/14. The personnel report, which contains retirements, resignation, leaves of absence, the approval of February 2014 claims number 34548 through number 34855, and the acceptance of a donation, the broadcasting set from Fox 19 WXIX for the CHS TV department. What is your pleasure, Board?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
I would mention that broadcasting sets quite a bit of money.
Right.
It is, and it looks sharp. It really looks nice.
And we need to say thanks to Betsy Ross, too, who had a hand in getting that here.
That's right. Jill Lockit.
And, yes, Mr. Lockit, that's right. Okay, any other comments? All right, moving into the action items, the first one is our personnel report. Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. Just three persons for your consideration this evening. Support staff, Heather Crisp is a special education teaching assistant at FreeZ effective February 7th. Jamie Adams, part-time bookkeeper at WTCC effective March 6th. And under executive position, Steve Ruby to take over the mat department chair responsibilities effective February 14, 2014. Those for your consideration this evening, Mr. Burchett.
All right, you've heard the report. What is your pleasure, Board?
I'm going to accept this report.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Spurlock, second there. Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
The 2014-15 school calendar, Dr. Hodges.
Board, in your packet, you had a copy of the 14-15 calendar, which is identical to the one that we had last month during the discussion items. I've had no comments on the calendar, so I would recommend that you adopt the 2014-15 calendar as presented.
Hey, you've heard this report. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to accept the report.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Jones? Any questions, discussion, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Head Start Continuation Grant, Self-Assessment Goals, Community Assessment. Dr. Reiki, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, member of the board. Dr. Hodges, as always, we've got Ms. Lori Boggs here, who is our expert on Head Start, and she has some legal pieces to share with you, as well as the budgets, and there's some interesting things happening in our Head Start program, as she shared with me. So Lori, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us out again this year. Real briefly, this is something we have to do every year. Our grant process involves about three different steps or four. The first one is, every year, we have to do a community assessment or a community assessment update, so that's the first part of our grant-writing process that particularly, I brought Debbie Barrett with me tonight, she's our program assistant, she's excellent at gathering data. She does an assessment on what our community needs. And as far as relates to our program, one of the things, I mean, there were about three different things that we wrote into our grant, and one of those involves transportation, that a lot of our people that we serve have no transportation. 17% even of all of our enrolled children this year, their parents have no car. A lot of them have access to a car, but most of our kids really, and families, are challenged when it comes to transportation. That's why it's really important in our community to provide busing for students. Also, poverty. Poverty continues to be an issue in our community with the unemployment rate and the lack of jobs, and also job skills, that you do have to have job skills to get certain jobs, and sometimes our families are below that. But 78% of the Head Start families that we have enrolled this year make less than $20,000 annually. Some of them make less than $5,000 annually. It is a challenge for them. We do have about 8% of our families that are not working. We have several families not working, and I think when you look at our enrollment, we have very few two-parent families. We have a lot of single women, single mother families. If you look at that, that's something else we also looked at in our community assessments. And again, we can serve over-income families, and a lot of programs, Head Start programs do that. We don't really do that. A lot of our, we only serve about 5% of our families are over-income. Some of those come through our special co-op, that they are over-income, but they come into our program because they have special needs. Some of those are just very high-at-risk children, even though they're over our income limits, they are still very at risk, so they come into our program as well. Another interesting fact that Debbie pulled out, though, that was that in unemployment in Fayette County, and if you read the papers and know that, averages around 10%, 9.9%. In November of 2013, 76.7% of Head Start families were unemployed. So again, we know that the poverty level, again, in our community is very challenging to families, but also very challenging to young children. Another just interesting fact that we looked at, and it had increased, that in Fayette County, 29% of the population rents, but out of Head Start families, 60% live in rental homes, and 15% live with other people. So again, just the challenges of poverty for families, and then that bleeds down to their children, makes for a healthy enrollment for our program, but again, it's a challenge even for our program to meet the challenges that our families face. Our community assessment, I will tell you that anybody that's interested in that, if you just email me or call me, would be more than happy to send you a copy of that if you're interested in that. So that's the first part of our process, to do an assessment of the community and see what the community needs are and how those relate to the families that we serve. The second part of our grant process every year is that we have to conduct an annual self-assessment. And this year, we kind of changed things around. One thing we decided as our leadership team, if you ask the same questions, you get the same information back. So we really did try to shake it up a little bit this year and look in some different directions, not only at our program, but again, at the challenges that our families are facing. We looked at how to strengthen the program, but also how to improve on the weaknesses and how we relate to families. So again, that really is made up of our staff, our policy council members, and parents are all part of that self-assessment committee, and I think it's really important because you get that information from a variety of resources. Some of the concerns that we found as part of that process, if you look at the paper that we submitted earlier, some of the strengths really, again, of the program, we've talked about that a lot. We do have strengths in our program, just we have really good recording systems in place as far as child outcomes and just the outcomes we need for other areas of our program. We really do have a highly qualified staff. Again, it's not a requirement at this time that Head Start teachers have degrees, but all of ours do, and we have several master's degrees all in early childhood, so that really, really does help our program, we have a high-quality program. We have a good communication system most of the time, sometimes we over-communicate, so that's always a danger. But we have a lot of family activities, too. We really do have to involve those families, and if you want to be successful with children, you have to get parent buy-in. So we offer a lot of activities for families. Again, we always find that as part of our process. Being part of Fayette County Schools is a big plus for our program. It sets the bar higher, we have resources, we have people we can talk to and people we can lean on, and it really is, it is a blessing for our program to be part of Fayette County Schools. And then also just our facilities. I think you guys know that from other reports that you have. We have wonderful facilities in Fayette County, and they're well-maintained, and that's a real positive for our children and our families when they come in. So some of the recommendations that we looked at, just we know there's a continued need for parenting skills. It seems like every year, that's a big challenge in our program. We have young parents, we have parents who didn't finish school, we have parents who need parenting skills, and we just really want them to improve their role as the child's advocate, number one, and to be a child's advocate correctly, not a, someone that comes in and just raises pain, but how do you be a child's advocate? But also, you're the child's teacher. What are you teaching your children? Because whether you intend to or not, you are. So that's one of the big roles that we need to fill, and we're always looking for ways that we can do that better. We also know, and I think we talked about that last year, our children are coming to school with more and more emotional skills lacking. We have children that have no self-control, and that is something that we work on daily, that we've implemented a new curriculum to look at that. We're doing some training on that with staff. We have to have children who have that executive function as part of their being, or they won't do well in school. So that's another area that we are looking at training on. Family partnerships, again, if we don't have that parent buy-in, a child will not do as well. So we're looking at that and making sure that we follow up on referrals that we give parents, are they using those referrals? And then just again, targeted staff training, we need to be really, really mindful of what do we need, and where can we get the best resources to meet that with our staff? So we're looking hard at those areas. Some of the other things, too, that you'll see written into the grant playgrounds, we've got lots of new playground requirements, and I talked to Dr. Reiki about that this afternoon. One of my favorite playground requirements that's new is, we have to provide shading for primarily slides, because they're a burn hazard for children. So now, we're going to have to provide some kind of shading for all the slides in our program, so we're going to be looking at that, and it's a costly adventure, so we have to write that into our grant. Health prevention, we have lots of kids, again, they live in poverty, they have health problems. We are charged with helping families to not only prevent those, but to follow up when they need some healthcare. So those are some of the things that we found through our self-assessment, and again, then we have to take that information from the community assessment and the self-assessment, and then we have to write those into program improvement goals. And those program improvement goals, again, they really do follow the needs that are listed in that bottom paragraph of the information you have in front of you. We had four program improvement goals with steps, and they all dealt with how to improve our playgrounds, how to improve our family relationships, what kind of training does our staff need. So those then feed into our long-term and short-term goals, and I didn't include that in your packet, but I am going to pass that around, and I'll just hand that to Dr. Bayer to do that, just so you can see those and look at those. Long-term goals are goals that, really mostly, that we continue. The goals we have to put money towards in our budget, and there are some things that we continue, and some of those might be just analyzing data and the equipment we need to collect the data we need. How to use technology, how to maintain facilities and playgrounds, continued use of our monitoring system to make sure that we're getting good data and good information about where we are and where we need to go. But if you look, especially down at some of the short-term goals, the short-term goals are things that we need to accomplish within a year's time. And I won't read those to you, but you can look down through there and see, I mean, they do deal with our playgrounds, they do deal with the children's social, emotional... They do deal with the children's social, emotional needs and what resources can we provide to families. Adult literacy, health issues, again, that's something we have to address when we see those with children, and we see those a lot. And then just ways to develop good, positive partnerships with parents so their children's can be successful in school. So then again, those goals feed right into our budget. And when we're writing the budget and writing the grant, the first thing that we talked to Dr. Riki about today was that we're in the second year of a five-year non-competitive grant. We used to have to have a three-year grant. Now we have a five-year grant, and they give those to programs of quality. So last year, our program did receive one of those. So it basically means that we do not have to compete, that we are just going to be a continuation program for five years. Now, that doesn't mean if you mess up big time that they won't pull your grant. But it does mean that we will be a non-competitive program for five years. So that kind of takes some of the pressure away from that. And again, it's because of program quality. We have a good staff. We have good child outcomes. Our children do achieve and parent involvement. But if you look down through there, the second good piece of news is the money they took away from our program last year because of sequestration has been restored to our program this year. So the money that was withdrawn was about $56,000 last year. It's now back as part of our operating funds. So our base grant is for $1,070,000 about. Every year, they have set aside that $18,937 for training. Head Start is big on training. That has to be used specifically for staff and parent training. So that is earmarked for that. And that's, our goals have to be addressed to that. And then this year, also, in addition to giving us back the money that they took away, they did give us a 1.3% COLA increase, or cost of living increase. So we will be using those, that money for the evaluations and the evaluations that are based on your performance and the increments that staff will be getting for good performance. That will all be earmarked for raises and that kind of thing from the new evaluation system. So the grant total for the amount was $1,102,856. But we, again, for every dollar we get federally, we have to give them back 25 cents worth of in-kind. And that amounts to $275,714. And I kind of listed some of the things that we have there. The federal grant supplies all of the operating budgets for our program. And the community, and again, Fayette County Schools, because we're part of this school corporation, supplies the needed in-kind match for our grant. So again, a bonus for our program because we're part of Fayette County Schools. Again, our budget has to be developed around that community assessment, that self-assessment, the goals you come out with. So if you look down at that third paragraph, I've got you some projector totals for line items. So for personnel, there's $709,000. The COLA is specifically, again, for rise in performance-based evaluations, and that's listed. French benefits, about $241,000. The training and technical assistance has to be used for training. It can't be used for anything else. So that's pretty specific. Supplies around $24,000. And purchase services, I just kind of added some of the things that that covers, but around $95,000. But again, we have to provide transportation. And one thing we did do, we met with Janie yesterday, and she gave us lots of good ideas about in-kind and things. But the money that we last year, because of that cut, was taken away from us, we've restored back to where it was. So transportation is back up to what we had paid in all previous years. We restored what was cut from us. But then we also know that we have to improve playgrounds because with that five-year grant, you have five years to do that. You have to have a plan to do that, and you have to meet those deadlines. So we're working on that. And the last interesting piece was this year, we've noticed, again, we've always been fortunate to have good parent volunteerism. This year, that isn't the case. We aren't getting parents to volunteer in the classroom. And we've looked at that. It's not because of criminal history checks. In the past, that has kind of been a barrier for some of our parents, but that is not the issue this year. They're just not volunteering in the classrooms. And again, if you look at that community assessment, it's not because we're working. So one thing that we're going to look at next year, one thing we can get parents to volunteer for are field trips. As a teacher and a parent, I never really cared for field trips, but our parents like to go on field trips. So we have kind of cut that from our budget and made field trips just necessary. But we're going to add some of that back to the line item to get the parent volunteerism. Because again, Head Start is strong in that area, and they want parents to volunteer. So we're looking at all different kinds of ways we can get parents back into the program to volunteer. So that would also come out of that purchase services line item. Again, our grant has to be finalized and submitted by April 1st. We're going to talk tomorrow to our regional officer to run some things by her to see if we're on the right track. In adding that money back into our budget, they are not encouraging us to add the slots that we cut. We cut a minimum. We cut eight last year, and other programs cut hundreds. But we made it the minimum we could cut. They are not encouraging the programs at all to add those slots back, which again, is an interesting happenstance with that. But what they are encouraging you to do is improve your quality. They want all Head Start programs to improve quality. Look for ways to do that. So again, our grant's going to be based on how can we improve the quality of our program here. So. Any questions?
Lori, just to be clear, are any of the things that you presented tonight to take formal board action before we move forward?
Yes. Yes. Our grant has to be submitted by April 1st. We need the board to approve the basic projected budget that we have, the community assessment, the self-assessment. We also need our policy council to approve that. If they aren't approved, we can't submit our grant. So.
No, so this is an action item. Okay.
So could we just, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
I was just going to say, could we approve all of those in one motion?
I would, yes.
And that would be, that's what I'd like to do.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
So you've heard Boggs' report. I hear a motion, we approve her report.
I'm moved to approve your report.
Okay, Warren's made the motion, and Mr. Hilton has seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next, we have the, recommend the approval of a bid for the CHS domestic water pipe replacement. Ms. Talley?
Thank you, Mr. Burge. In December, you approved accepting bids or advertising for bids for the CHS plumbing project, a base project with four alternates that had been designed by Schmidt Associates. Mr. Lenny Brim, our project manager from Schmidt Associates, is here this evening to answer any questions you might have specifically about the project. We have received those bids. We've reviewed them. Our recommendation is not for the lowest bid, but it is for the lowest and best bid. The lowest bid had a project completion of 155 days from the notice of acceptance. The notice of acceptance could not be, the soonest it could be would be tomorrow if you approved it tonight. That would mean that the project would not be completed until mid-August. The first teacher day is August 4th, based on the calendar you just approved. Therefore, we'd have a week and a half or two weeks where the high school might still be under construction. So we are recommending that you accept the bid of Carroll Electric. Their bid, including base bid and all four alternates, is $568,000. I will point out, it's only $9,000 higher than the lowest bid. But the project completion for it is well within the time that's given. Their completion is to be by July 31st. So that is our recommendation, that you approve the base and all four alternates.
If I might just add, some of you might be saying, well, construction projects, you know, we've done that when school's going on. But when this is, when this is happening, Lenny's going to shut the water off, and they've got to be done before he turns it back on. So when we say that we could be a couple of weeks into school, we could be a couple of weeks into school without water. And we can't have school without water. So that's why it's so critical that we get this done in a timely fashion. Is that an accurate statement?
That's correct.
Is that allowing for them any extra days for things to come up? I mean, nothing ever goes as planned or perfect. So, you know, is there a little bit of leadway there, any extra days if something happens? Or is it just down to the wire there?
Again, I'm Lenny Brim of Schmidt Associates. Excuse me, I will be the project manager on this project. We met with Carroll Electric a week ago. And we talked quite extensively with them about making sure they got done. So what our plan is, our action plan is to meet every Friday morning. And if they're falling behind on their schedule, they're going, they've agreed that they are going to work weekends. We absolutely will be done. They guarantee us they absolutely will be done by July 31st, one way or the other. So, and that, they have a, I don't have a lot of experience with Carroll Electric, but I have a lot of experience with Myers Mechanical, who is their subcontractor, who will be doing the work, doing the piping work. They're a good contractor. They can man the job. So I, and I feel very confident that we'll make that date. Well, we have to. There's no getting around. We have to make that date because as Dr. Otis said, we can't have school without water, period. Anything else?
Part of the conversation during the meeting was trying to find times when we might be able to get them in a little early, so they could try to get some things done ahead of time. Because they're very aware of that. Not only do they indicate they work weekends, but they bring in extra, extra workers to make sure that they meet that deadline because they know how critical that is for us.
Right.
And I've worked with Lenny before. When projects aren't quite where they're supposed to be, I remember the first one we worked together, I was about ready to kind of share with him where I thought we ought to be. And before I had a chance to speak, Lenny had them all whipped into shape. So that was, that worked well.
They're actually going to do some more spring break week.
Do some preliminary work behind the scenes?
Yeah.
Getting started.
No tear out or anything like that, but getting ready for the project.
Because they've got to get in the building and get, the guys that actually do the work have to get inside the building and get familiar with it and get their plan worked out to where they can attack it. And that's what's going to happen over spring break.
I was just going to ask, when are you really getting underway? When do you plan to start? And is that going to affect summer school? Are we doing summer school at high school?
There will be no domestic water, there'll be no domestic water in the high school. No running water at all for the summer.
They're, they're ready to start as soon as we can get the school year over.
The day after, the day after teachers leave, they will be, they will be mobilized.
What is that?
The day after teachers leave the building.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Where's this company from?
Richmond. Carroll Electric and Myers Mechanical are both out of Richmond.
Any other questions or concerns? Then what is your pleasure regarding the approval of the bid for the water pipe replacement?
I'm moved to approve the bid for the water pipe replacement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any other discussion? All those in labor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, Sarah.
Good morning.
All right, that completes our action items. Now we move into our discussion items, and we have various discipline reports, whatever. So Dr. Riki, we'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. In your packet, you were given photocopies or electronic copies of the student handbooks for the Career Center, the high school, the middle school, elementary schools. Elementary schools, of course, all share the same one. You were also given a copy of the discipline code of conduct as well as the bus conduct plans. And every year, we review these. The principals take leadership with curriculum committees, or not curriculum committees, committees that review the details and refine their operations to make it conducive to any new legal conduct code that we have to do, like the bullying thing, for instance, that was off this year. So we have to make sure our language is in there of what our actions are. In the handouts that you have, the changes are made and they all highlight. And we aren't going to take action tonight. It'll be next month. So you'll have additional time to review them. And one change from the memo that I gave you is our attorney, Mr. Bob Ron, has been reviewing these. And he has reviewed them. And he has some information he wants to share with us, mostly about some of the wording and the consistency between the different levels of schools. But he was unable to give, give me the written recommendations. He had some technology difficulty. So he did talk to me over the phones, so that I, I wanted to make sure I felt comfortable going forward with this, and I absolutely do. But I just wanted to give you the heads up that we may have a few wording changes. And I might be even able to get those to you at our special board meeting on March 18th. But I'm still waiting on him to give me the written documents. So just to ensure that we are going to make sure that we're in compliance as we need to be. But I wanted to offer you an opportunity tonight. I have a representation from the levels, all four levels here, that have helped to put together any of the changes. And I didn't know if there was something, I know at the Career Center, we had, we had no significant changes, only the dates themselves. Bus conduct, no changes. The code of conduct, no changes. The middle school, probably the largest change you're going to notice is that they had been treating their grading scale with an A+ of as in adding an extra weighted option, which middle school does not have weighted grades. So that is going to a 4.0. To stay in compliance or alignment with the high school, who also is going, has done an extensive study under Mr. Judd's leadership with addressing the weighted grades. We, he did a needs assessment and a lot of conversation. And we had GPAs that were excessively high in comparison to the same work output of our surrounding communities. So he's worked with this committee and trying to come up with a aligned grading system that, keeping of the grading scale, it's really the weighted effect. So both the middle school and the high school, an A+ is the same as an A. It takes more work and a higher percentage accuracy to get the A+. It'll still show up on their report card. The colleges will still see the A+. It's the GPA that needs to be in line with the rest of the school community. So that is there. Mr. Judd, is there something else that you wanted to make sure you drew their attention to and their focus for their study, since you had the most changes of any?
The only other thing would be the electronic device change.
Thank you. Thank you. Want to just touch base with the main change on that one?
Well, thanks to the foresight of the board, we have wireless available in our building. But we haven't been fully utilizing that for our students. And we feel that there's so much we can do in today's world. I look around, and all of you have Wi-Fi wireless laptops. And I hate to embarrass you, but there's been 11 people get out their laptops and cellphones during this meeting. Any audience, Mrs. Geisting has a cellphone and a laptop. So we don't have a, we don't have a situation in our building where all the kids have devices. And so with all the new 21st century technology, we're not able to use it yet. And we want to promote kids having their devices in school. I admit this, we did give it a two-week trial where we told kids, bring your devices. If you have a laptop or a tablet or a cellphone that you can use in class for instructional purposes, please bring it. And I'm pleased to report that I've seen teachers use it. I know Mrs. Long is here tonight. I saw, I was in her classroom doing an observation, and she had the kids take a 10-question assessment on their cellphones. They got immediate feedback. She can keep that data and analyze it, see where she needs to go back and reteach. Ms. Chala Medina, our Spanish, our French teacher, came to me after school to say, I have to show you something. So she gets out her cellphone and shows me that the kids are sending her from their cellphones recordings of them talking in French. And all hours of the day, they can send these to her. Hopefully, she's not listening to them all hours today and night. But even at home, she can push a button, a button on her iPad or her device and listen to, listen to those kids speak French, and she can assess them right there. And it's, it's an amazing And it's, it's an amazing tool, but unfortunately, not all of our kids have devices, so we're, we're trying to make it possible for them to use their cellphones, and their iPads, and their laptops, whatever they can bring to school, to bring them into the 21st century. So always before, if they brought them, we said, no, you can't have it, and there was discipline involved. Now, we're trying to go to the policy where you have approval to use it for educational purposes in the classroom, and if you misuse it, then you're gonna lose that right, and there will be discipline according to our old policy. If you misuse it, or go against the acceptable use policy, there will still be discipline. So that's basically the change. It's a big change, you'll see it, it's highlighted in yellow.
Mr. Judd, do you have any idea how many kids you think that doesn't, that don't have the smartphones?
We did do a survey last year, Ken, do you remember the technologies?
That survey was a survey that included not just devices, but also included technology at home, or someplace they could go, like grandma's house. So it really wasn't something that was applicable to what this is talking about.
I'm still thinking that there are lots of kids that don't have cellphones, don't have tablets, and don't have even the internet at home, so they don't have any access. If I were to flip my classroom and say, hey, tonight, I want you to watch this YouTube video, and we'll discuss it tomorrow, there are still kids in our school that don't have a device to do that. I'd say somewhere between 10 and 20% of the students.
This is kind of jumping ahead to another item, but is this iPad initiative going to address this?
I was gonna ask if it would be okay if we went ahead and kind of combined that, because Mr. Judd is on a roll here. And I hate to have to repeat and extend, et cetera, is, is that okay to do that? It's still just in discussion.
Is it okay? Yes.
Okay. And then, I asked Mr. Miller to join with us, because this is a, this is a village effort to try to pull off how to get devices in all of our students' hands, who cannot afford their devices. What I loved about what Mr. Judd shared, those examples are things that can't happen without the device. So it's not just that we're, we can type, that we can do word processing anymore, you know, it's about that, that formative assessment from being able to give the kids a quiz and get know one-to-one what your students answered right then and right there. It's about audio and listening to them record their voices on their own devices, you know, so that's, that's above and beyond saying it aloud in a group, you know, in front of the class. So that's the, the education we think our students deserve, because others are getting that same thing. So with that in mind, we've been working diligently between the business office and our finances, making sure we can do what we can, communicating with Apple computers and trying to see what's out there, and working with leadership and surveys, and that's why I would ask you to start, is with your needs assessment, with our, your, your survey with your teachers, to kind of build the background, to see if we're ready to actually move into this arena. Sorry, I thought, well, you brought it.
Well, we did survey the staff, and like many of us in this room, some of our staff, when they graduated high school, there was not a computer in, in the building. When I came back to teach, there was not even one computer in Connesville High School. Things have changed. Now every teacher has a computer, not many of the classrooms have computers, so, that being said, we still have some teachers who are dinosaurs, like me, I mean, when they started, there were no computers, and they still, even though they have computers in their classroom, they don't think it's always necessary. But we did a survey, and one of the questions we asked, do you think getting technology in the hands of students is important in today's learning environment? 94% of our teachers at the high school somewhat agreed or highly agreed that was true. There were only one, there was only one teacher that highly disagreed. I can tell you that that teacher had a question in, in the classroom the other day, and I won't say if it's male or female, but they had a question in the classroom that the teacher could not answer. And during that two-week window, he says, I don't know the answer. He said, how many of you have cellphones? Well, everybody held it up, took it out of their pockets, they weren't allowed to have them in his room, but they took them out, he said, let's look it up. And within 30 seconds, they had the answer to the question, and he came back and said, you know, I can see where we can use these in the classroom. Oh, I said, he. I meant to say she. Another question. iPad or digital learning use is one of the best instructional methods to engage students at this time. 72% of the teachers either agreed or highly agreed, and only three teachers in our building somewhat disagreed or highly disagreed. We asked the teachers if they were willing to implement instructional lessons incorporating the use of digital instruction. 94% said yes, three teachers said no. Well, you can understand that there would be teachers that wouldn't want students to have those devices in their classroom, for example, PE class. On a Wednesday, though, when they're doing instructional reading and writing activities, they might allow the kids to bring those iPads in, or whatever device we choose. So it's overwhelmingly in favor of, of doing this. How many times a week do you see yourself utilizing digital learning? 27% of our teachers said every day of the week, 20% said four days, 31% said three days, so 78% of our teachers are gonna use them at least three days a week. And we did have four teachers that said they don't see themselves using iPads in the classroom. One of the things that teachers made clear to us in the survey, though, is that if we're going to do this, and if we're going to bring digital learning to our classroom, we need some support, we need training, we need someone in the building who can show us what to do, show us the new things. And we've been doing it all year. We have, we've had, Vicki Long did a presentation in our in-service meeting, or faculty meeting on Friday morning, on using a program called Socrative.com, where kids can, can do what I told you she did in her classroom, they can take quizzes on an iPad or a cellphone. All the teachers looked at that and said, that, you know, that's pretty neat. And so we're hoping that people are willing to try these new things. We want the kids to have these computer skills, because, let's face it, when you go out in the real world today, you use your, your computer, you use your cellphone, you use your iPad. We're gonna be taking state mandated testing online, and some of the things you have to do to take the skill are not, to take the test, they're skills that are not intuitive. Some, some questions, you have to be able to drag and drop and answer, some you have to be able to copy and paste and answer. And kids who don't have these devices don't have those skills. And so when it comes time to take the test, how do you think they're gonna do on the test? They're not gonna do very well. So when we have these devices, we can get these skills in the classrooms, kids can be practiced, they can, they can achieve the things that they're gonna be tested over and show their mastery of the skills rather than computer skills, the, the standards that they're being tested on. So I guess I will, I will tell you that research has shown that one-to-one learning provides a lot of positives for students and staff. It improves writing skills and depth of student research, it increases student interest and ownership of the learning process, it increases project-based learning, and reduces the old, sit in your seat, I'm going to lecture you all day and, and teach you, and you're gonna take notes and learn. Some schools have shown that it actually increases their attendance. Kids are excited about coming and getting a chance to use technology and do research. Some schools have shown that it reduces behavior problems. Some schools have shown that it increases parent interest in the school. They want to know what the kids are doing, probably because they see their kids doing homework and schoolwork on their devices at home. And the last thing, some schools have found that it just flat-out improves morale of teachers and students, because you're not doing the same things you've done for 15 or 20 years as, as a teacher, you're doing new things, and it revitalizes the school. So that's really all I have to say in support of going to this one-to-one initiative.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think you're probably speaking to the choir, Mr. Judd.
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah. What can we do, I mean, can we get these devices into the hands of our students that don't have them, and can we implement this as an learning tool in school preparation?
Well, that's our hope.
I can add a little bit to that. What we, what we want you to understand is, in the vision, in our long-term timeline plan with technology, it was there, it's in there. When Ms. Colm Todd and Mr. Miller went to a session not too long ago, they were learning of some opportunities to speed up our plan, to get those in the, in the hands of our kids sooner than what we anticipated, and that was when the excitement started happening. But you also had to get Mr. Judd moving more swiftly on getting the needs assessment and make sure we were ready. So Apple Computers is, it started with sharing with us an opportunity to lease the computers, and then at the end of a three-year lease cycle, for a dollar, we could buy all the computers, and we're looking at 1,100 computers, if we were looking at 1,100 in our high school. High school is a focus initially, because QZAB is our support and kind of our infrastructure, our dollars, our resources, if you will, to help speed up this process of deployment. And QZAB was written for our high school, and it has a focus around the high school, and that's how it was approved. Then Ms. Colm Todd, and her expertise knows about sustainability, and so we are learning as much as we can about how our textbook reimbursement program can help us sustain renting these to students. So they're not going to get them as an ownership piece, they will be renting them as if they were renting a textbook. We still don't have all the details figured out, we're still hoping the state loosens the reins a little bit, but the urgency of this was that the leasing, if we were to go through with the leasing, we had to have an Apple, an answer to Apple by March 23rd, which would bring it to this board meeting. We've since learned and have investigated that the product, or the iPad, that they were willing to lease at the lowest cost is what, is an iPad 2? Is that correct, iPad 2, Mr. Miller?
Correct.
And iPad 2's been around for a little bit, and we're worried about if we have to maintain these for five years, as Ms. Colm Todd figured out what it takes to, to get embedded in this, they were probably gonna be obsolete by the time we got the bind for a dollar. So we sent Mr. Miller back to the drawing board and said, what else can you do for us? And we just were learning as of yesterday that perhaps if we move up to the iPad 3, we will have a device for a little bit more money that will last us a lot longer. And that's the way we like to do business, because we have an education, have to have things, textbooks are supposed to last at least six years. So these devices, although the information can be updated regularly, kids are using them, okay? So we have to make sure that we have a place so we can, we can recycle those, and the textbook fees and the QZAB can help combine that. We'll get the details figured out. We're hoping that this fall, we can deploy this.
Are there any grants available, Dr. Reiki, or?
Well, a lot of the grants, what we find the grant money right now is not necessarily, it could buy maybe a cart or a classroom of computers, it could help with professional development dollars. Mr. Miller's also been working, we've been working on this for two years now, of planning ahead. It's been in our timeline, so we have been working on training and working on Title II dollars and things to make sure that training is available. We're still trying to work out the support and personnel. If we bring in 1,100 iPads at a, all at the same time, Mr. Miller starts to shake. No, not really, but I do, I do, because I know that when, when they're in hands, we don't want it to be a bad experience, we don't want kids in the room, well, mine doesn't work, and or I couldn't get that uploaded. It, there really has to be an infrastructure in place, and that's, we've been planning, you know, a lot of planning, conversations, researching, networking, we've got a team that's been working diligently on it. So I guess it's with your blessing, we're not asking at this time for, you know, for approval, we just want, if there's something that we're not doing, that you would like us to do before proceeding, to let us know, because we're, we're excited, and we're excited that it's gonna come sooner than what we originally thought, if everything works out financially, and Janie will not let it happen if it, if it does.
Part of the reason it's ideal this year, in addition to the QZAB, is if, if we're going to use textbook rental for a portion of the purchase, so we can include that as a charge to the students, this is the year we adopt English textbooks, and every student at high school has English. And so if you're gonna move to this type of technology, it's really advantageous to consider it this year. Then the second layer to that is history is next year, and almost every student at the high school has history. So you're gonna have two years where you'll move from bound textbook adoption to the digital curriculum adoption. You speak about grants to purchase this, to, to help with the purchase. The QZAB will help purchase a portion of it, and might even be able to do all of it. The difficulty, or my concern about that, is if we do not use some textbook rental funds for that, we cannot charge any textbook rental for those computers. You can only charge textbook rental for the portion that is paid for out of textbook rental, of the computers. So we need to be trying, if we think this is how we're gonna deliver instruction going forward, we need to try and be building some money for five years down the road when we need to be replacing these computers, and it's not, oh, we have this, we've used them five years, they're out of date, we have, we have no, we have no money. So we need to be, you know, at least trying to help come up with a way to defray some of that cost for the replacement. But like Kathy said, there are a lot of details in this, it's, it's sort of a, a picture with broad brushstrokes this evening to make sure that, that you, you support moving towards this, support this, the desire for the students and the staff.
Does it have to be the iPads, or will?
Well, in the, in the, when you read the research and the reports, with, where there's a high poverty situation, one of the advantageous things, and Mr. Miller can attest to this with his networking, is if you don't come up with some kind of uniform piece for your population, you're going to have still a lot that have insufficient, or they're not going to be having a tool that's gonna be able to take the software, or whatever we're doing. They'll have maybe something. So if you have an affluent population, to just say, just bring your own device, and for the 10 of you that don't have one in the school, we have a rental, or we have a way you can check one out, they have a better chance of success with that. In this type of a community, we don't. So a lot of the research that Mr. Miller, myself, and the committee have been doing is, which device should we look at? And so, Mr. Miller, if you want to add to that, why we've selected the iPad?
One of the considerations is how long the battery will last through the day on the device that you're working with, and I'm sure you, many of you've had experiences with, with laptops and netbooks and notebooks, we're not gonna get a seven-period at high school schedule out of that device. Our reflection on the iPads and the amount of light that the battery provides you, we think we'll certainly be able to address seven periods of a day with that particular device. Well, there are other options, there's, there's an item called a Chromebook, and those have been given consideration, consideration as well, but a Chromebook is going to be internet-dependent, and with our high poverty, with high poverty rate, that's gonna be a represent, a challenge for that student to take that device home and not be able to address their curriculum for the evening. So for me, it's not about the device, it's, it's more of a focus on, you know, the, the engagement with a digital curriculum, and, and the hopes of seeing the achievement in return. But at this point, our initiative seems to point to, and other schools' experiences seem to point to, at this point, we're really looking at the iPads, and specifically the iPad Airs at this stage.
And can students have their own as well, and if they have their own, and they wouldn't have to purchase one through the school?
As pointed out by Mr. Judd, you know, I'm a three-to-one, I'm not a one-to-one, I'm three-to-one, and then Mrs. Geisting's back here in a two-to-one setting, you know, and, and they have a two-week pilot with their bring-your-own-device initiatives. I think, you know, what are we going to do is the best thing for our students, and if that continues to be used responsibly, and we have responsible use within the school, I see no reason why we can't continue to explore the opportunities for them to use their devices as well. But textbook rental has to be fair... But, textbook rental has to be fair across the board to all students. So, all students will be working with a school-provided device that they're renting. So, we can't just pick and choose who's going to get them. We do have to be across the board. That is legislative-defined that our textbook rental is across the board for all the students.
And it also speaks to what we're able to manage. Because we have a very small tech team, very small tech team. So, if we have multiple different devices and they're trying to get in an English class or in any class, the same kind of response or activity or being able to make the communication, we, if we don't have some kind of uniform process, we may have some students doing without it, they'll be buddying up all the time. So, it really is in the best interest, financially, for instructionally, for, you know, to support our teachers and so that they're not going to, now, I'm not going to do it because only half my kids have it. That's kind of the decision the committee has.
We're getting back to the financial piece, Janie. Is there, and I'm all about reserves for replacements, I understand that. Is there any way that rainy day funds can be used to kick-start it and then collect rental fees?
No.
So, that we would have?
Has to come from book rental.
Has to, is that?
You can only charge book rental for what's paid out of book rental.
We're already starting buying it, aren't we? You have to collect, you have to collect the book rental fees.
Yeah, no, it's backwards. And I don't agree with this. I mean, it's just wrong. And if we decide to do this, there's a lot of things, because we're going to have to, we're going to have to loan money to the book rental fund so they have the money to make their initial investment. That's a lot in the devilish details. But, the answer to that right now, under the rules for what you can charge in book rental, is no.
Do we have any idea what the charge about is going to be?
Yeah, we're going to make it work and we're going to make it so it's doable for our community. The QZAB is going to help us. Without that, we wouldn't even be able to entertain this.
So, about how much is it going to be, you think? I mean, ballpark.
Do you agree with that?
Thanks. Imagine this. Came out of my mouth, and I don't agree with this.
Is that what that fancy guy does?
Hello?
We don't know all the answers. We have lots of details, but we do believe we can make it reasonable and it's something that our parents.
Free and reduced lunch, didn't they? I checked just the other day. I was running some numbers, just trying to get a feel for it. Fifty-five percent of our students currently at the high school qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Fifty-five percent?
Yes. This tech, digital technology, digital curriculum, that cost can be passed back to the state. So, what we charge for the textbook rental, for this, can be passed back to the state for the free and reduced lunch populations. The numbers I was using for the iPad was for the iPad 2's, not the 3's. And it was in the $20 to $30 range a year for what I, when I was figuring, two-thirds of the cost of the iPad coming from the QZAB, and we would not be able to charge book rental on it. One-third of the cost coming from book rental, and we would be able to charge for that. So, I'm really thinking it's probably going to be in the neighborhood, maybe $30 to $35 a year.
Yes.
On a book rental charge, I don't know if you were asking about book rental, what the total cost, program cost was for 1,100 computers?
We're working on, we're negotiating. They start at $479, but we're negotiating.
Oh, I thought you were asking what it was going to cost the parents.
Yeah, that's kind of.
I thought that's what you said.
Just we're talking about cost here, just a concern. What will you do with students that don't return them, lose them? What's that going to do?
Well, part of the language in this handbook, which has started all of this conversation, is addressing that. And we know there are going to be issues. If we don't do, we're going to have to make sure we do a good job of training and having them be responsible users. We have, we're working with teachers on that right now, what's the responsible applications with that. So, we are going to address all of those things. And I know it runs right into the policy and the language that Dr. Hodges is going to share too. We have to keep our, know what our efforts are towards and make sure we do a good job of over-communicating, educating, and then helping Mr. Miller make sure he's staffed so that we can take care of the incidental.
Are teachers going to have to buy that as well? I mean, be part of it, or?
They don't purchase one. We don't give them. They have one. It's not a teacher's edition, it's like a teacher's edition rental.
Just like they rent.
What I'm saying is the teachers are going to have to have the same.
Oh, yes.
Right.
We already are very close to that at the high school. Middle school already, we are there. The teachers have one.
Do the teachers have to get that on their own?
No.
No. You have the opportunity to get some.
Just like the teacher's edition, it only doesn't look like a book.
I don't know if, I don't know if this is good news or bad news. We are not the first one to this party. There are a lot of school corporations that have gone before us, and we're learning a lot from their mistakes.
Absolutely.
And so, some of the things that you're talking about, how do you deploy these? How do you get them back? Those things, we're learning from things that they have done that will help us hopefully avoid as many of those as we can. Will it be perfect? No, it won't. But, to use Warren's terminology, I think the QZAB is going to help us kick-start this. But, so often with technology in the past, not just here, but lots of places, when there's soft money to get started, you get excited and you get a lot of things going without giving sufficient thought to the sustainability piece of it. And that's what we're wrestling with, is how do we, how do we get started, but how do we sustain that going down the road? Now, I heard a presentation about a month ago, and you're talking about two or three devices. They were talking to us about when you're setting up your wireless, you need to be thinking about, students have as many as five to seven devices that they can use that wireless network. Not that they're there right now, but it might not be too far down the future. Some of this stuff, you know, you go, "Wow, I didn't think about that and I didn't realize that." One of the things they talked about too, an advantage of the iPad and the Chromebook is how quickly those boot up. It takes Cindy quite a while to bring these little notebooks up for it to boot up. You can't take that kind of time in a class waiting for that. The iPads boot up almost instantly, and the battery life was another really important thing. So, I'm excited about it. It's something that I've always thought it would really be nice to do, is how we're going to afford it, how we're going to sustain it. And with some creative people and some creative thinking, I think we can make this, I think we can make this work.
Well, why don't you guys go ahead and do that, proceed on this track, on the investigation, and see if we can make it happen? I mean, you guys are, you're all smart people. That's why we have you here. And you're all good people and you have, our students' best interests at heart. And I think this would be something that this board would probably like to see.
I think you ought to attend some of our trainings, and you could learn too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'd like, you know, the finance committee. When we get a plan together for the finance piece, I'll utilize the finance committee.
Position on that, they've been doing this for, I guess, four years ago, is a conference about what we're talking about doing. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know that one. We had a lot of interaction with districts in the state of Indiana. My hometown is one of those, and so far, in the forefront, Bluffton's been doing quite a bit on the forefront. We look to others in our professional network here within the state, and then guidance from the Office of eLearning from the DOE. So, we've got our fingers out there in all the different districts that are working and looking and soliciting for counsel and advice in some of those experiences that they've had. And I'll tell you, from here to here, they find things that they want to do better and they change what their practices are, and we want to take advantage of those best practices.
I was at a conference with Denver, gave a presentation, what they were doing. That's been four years ago.
We're trying to catch up.
Well, I'll have to see if I can find some resources on that.
Know with this until new tech positions needed, I mean, new people to help with everything, eventually? Well, one thing that Mr. Judd spoke to, and when, by the needs assessment with the teachers, is they need support. And what we, we've been venturing into somewhat is the coaching role. And I think we can expand on that and try to figure out creatively how to do that, because you have to have your experts in the building in order to have that support there for the teachers. And they're not talking, they don't want Mr. Miller to come in and help them with this. They're talking, you know, someone who's available regularly, they can plan with, they can train with, et cetera. So, Andrew Stanley is somewhat in that position, except he's stretched so thin because of all the acuity and all of the pieces that he has to do with our infrastructure, that he doesn't get to touch and work with the coaches as much, or the teachers, and be that interacting planner with them. So, we would like to get him more into that role and then maybe have a secondary one as well, especially at the high school, if we do get all our, you know, everything lined up and ready to go. So, we'll talk about that.
And we'll have to figure out where we're going to have to pay for.
And we are working on it. And if we have ideas, we're working on it.
Why don't you guys work on that?
It's going to be the whole package. We're excited. But, thank you for listening. And if there's any other questions on the student handbook, since, I mean, we'll have an opportunity to talk a little bit more, but please feel free to ask as they come up or give me a call, and I'll share with you if Mr. Runt has additional changes.
Did Randy want to address credits and grade scale at this point? Or did you want to wait for policy?
If they had questions.
If they have questions about that, can we address it?
I just want to make sure you're aware of the proposed change in the number of credits it takes to graduate and the fact that there's a significant change in the weighting of grades as it goes through. And you need to be aware of those.
And I don't know that those are in the handbook, they're in the policy, with your language, I think.
Well, the grades are in the handbook, and that's one thing.
The weight.
The weighting of the grades. And that's one thing, I was looking for the graduation, the number of credits. I didn't know if that was in the handbook. It refers back to a folder or something, but.
Just in the career planner and also probably assigned in the handbook.
All right. We can deal with that when policy comes up, but I just was hoping he'd cover it so it didn't happen.
Sorry. You got to let me know those things ahead of time.
If we have a question, we do it now? If it's about the handbook, go ahead and ask, or not?
Well, I was just, the number of credits is what I'm, I was just, what is the comparison of that of our surrounding school corporations?
Well, I can tell you that Union County, let me, I've got this, it's going out of my order too. Union County requires 40, Hagerstown 44, Richmond requires 42, Lincoln requires 46, like we do currently. Batesville, who's in our conference, requires 41. And these schools that require maybe 41 or 42 are requiring maybe, I know Batesville requires just an extra PE credit to make it 41. East Central in our conference is 40, South Dearborn's 40, Franklin County's 40. So, we look at our surrounding schools, except for Rushville, who's at 48. And I'm not sure what they require beyond what we require. And Lincoln, most of our other competing schools around us are at the 40 area.
So, I guess my concern is, okay, how does this affect Career Center? How does this affect your elected music arts, all of these other things?
Well, I don't think it'll affect it very much at all. We still have seven periods a day. Kids can still wind up with 14 credits a year. You still have to have 46, 47 credits for an honors diploma or a technical honors diploma, which is probably what a lot of Career Center kids would be going for if they're academic students. We still have plenty of room for the kids who want to graduate with over 50 credits. You know, if they pass their classes and stay four years, they can do that. This is designed for those kids who say, "I'm ready to get out of Connersville High School. I'm going to go to Franklin County and graduate semester early because I'm going to have to stay four years, or maybe more than four years, to get the 46 that Connersville High School requires." Now that students can do that, they can go across county borders and go to school elsewhere. We're going to try to grab some kids to come here for our early college high school, but we don't want to lose those kids that say, "Why, why am I going to stay at Connersville and get to 46 credit diploma?" When the state says you only have to have 40, and they know some of our surrounding schools, maybe they live closer to Union County than they do Connersville. Maybe they live closer to Franklin County High School than they do Connersville High School. That would be an option for them to drive and to get out of school earlier, and we don't want that to happen. Another reason we want to do it, that's what the state requires for graduation, that's the Core 40 diploma. And a lot of schools, I have a whole list here, several schools just in the last few months have reduced theirs to the 40-credit level. I know that Peru went from 50 to 48. They're starting to reduce. Greeter Clark County Schools went from 46 in January, they went down to 40. That's your Jeffersonville area. So, it's a thing you're seeing all over the state. And what we noticed last year, we had a couple of students that didn't graduate by one class. And not to say that that one class would have earned them a Core 40 diploma or even a 46-credit diploma that we wanted, but if we could have gotten them one more class, we would have had two more graduates and our graduation rate would have been up to the 90 that we shoot for. We don't want to be stuck in a situation where students are not graduating on time in four years with what the state requires, Core 40, and have to come back four and a half years, five years to graduate to meet our requirements. It hurts our grade as a school. Right now, we're graded as a school on getting out in four years with the cohort, but that's your grad rate, and we don't want that to be hurt by our requirements of more than the state requires.
So, you may not have the answer, but why did we, why did we have to, the states?
I think it went back to a time where there was no Core 40. And our school corporation, like all the other schools, said, "Well, here, you know, you're going to have the chance to earn 14 a year. What's a decent number and still have a few maybe where you don't get a credit in a few of them because you were behind or because maybe you were sick and you failed a class." So, 46 was a compromise, and I don't know how long we've had 46.
And if I might add, there's one, the new thing that's come this year with college and career readiness, the state is putting a new assessment for high school students in place called the Accuplacer, and the pilot year is this year. Last week and this week, we're undergoing it. Those students don't reach a certain proficiency. They're going to be required to do remediation, and for the right reasons. They're not ready for college and career readiness. And so, we're going to learn, in fact, we're already learning some new information. And what we will try to instill in them is a success or a supplemental class that may not be worth a credit, but they definitely need some extra support. And what the state's doing then is we can put it in their seventh period a day. So, if we continue to add those high numbers, and then they'll opt out if that's even an option, of a class that doesn't have a credit, and that's the class they need for quality. So, if we focus on quality, sometimes those classes that they need are not even worth a credit. They just need them because they're behind in the learning or there's achievement gaps. So, that's really, that's all coming down this semester. We're experimenting, or we're not experimenting, the state is, and we're piloting. Everybody has to do this. So, this, that the high school's recommending, I think will actually allow us to really put forth a program for those students that are not college and career-ready based on the benchmark assessments that we're now being required to give at the high school. So, that's something else to think about. It's just kind of an afterthought, but it'll work in our favor.
So, those students that we have to remediate won't be able to get 14 credits in a year. They'll get maybe 12, because they'll take remediation classes.
We'll have five-year high school.
Worse, they're going to not get remediation. They won't be as well out.
Randy, I might point out to Mr. Burchett's question about CTE. Students still attend the CTE courses just for credits. They're after certification and dual credit. And they're becoming more and more aware of that on their route pathways, that they can get that dual credit that goes right into early college. That's what they're looking after, that goal of human CTE, is certification, certification, certification. I just know that kids are ready to get out of school, and I don't want to see our extra, I mean, I feel strongly about music and all those things, and I don't want the kids to get out of school and then those programs fall by the wayside.
By reducing the required classes you have to take, they have more options to take classes that interest them. And I agree with you, we don't want the kids, in most cases, to graduate in three years or three and a half years, because they're not going to be here to be counted for our ADM for part of that time. So, we're going to try to keep them here as long as we can, but there are students that we're not having good luck keeping here. that we're not having good luck keeping here.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Judd, Dr. Reiki, Miller, anybody else that presented. So, that being just a discussion item, I guess we are ready to move into policy updates. Dr. Hodges?
Board, the first policy that, that you had in your pack was policy 3.21. And while it looks like there's a lot of change, the simple change was every employee gets evaluated every year instead of the sliding scale that we had before. That brings that into current practice. Policy 4.15 is a policy that, that reduces the number of credits one needs to graduate from 46 to 40. Randy, one of the things that I said in the policy is that 40 semester credits as required for a Core 40 diploma. And currently, we do give some 40 credit diplomas as a general diploma. Is, is this going to change that?
No, we will still get, there will still be an option for certain students who won't, who won't be on track for Core 40 diploma, to still get the general because the state allows that.
One of the reasons I mentioned Core 40, it's not just accumulation of 40 credits in Core 40, it's a prescribed set of classes that they take. So, on the one hand, it sounds like we're reducing expectations, but the Core 40 diploma in many cases is pretty, it's still a high diploma to get to. We still use that 40, 40 credit diploma for some students, but I don't want you to think that that's, that we're significantly reducing rigor on that. 4.16 grading system at, at the high school, it is in the student handbook, but the weighting of grades is going to be significantly different going forward. Only dual credit and advanced placement classes will have the opportunity to earn additional points on their grade point average. And I believe the maximum that you can get is a point three on that, where right now I think you can get a full, a full point on the GPA. So, so when you, you go to activities in the future and you hear people talking about GPAs, the GPAs are not going to be as high as what they had been before. It doesn't mean that their work has suffered any, it's just that the weightedness of that has changed. And that's a pretty significant change from where we've been before. Policy 4.18 is the policy. We talked a lot about last year right around graduation time. As it was previously written, it didn't take into consideration six semester graduates, this new policy does. And while it may look a little inconsistent, we talk about students needing to complete eight semesters of high school, but we also talk about six semester graduates. The catchphrase at the end, early graduates must have prior approval of the high school principal to be eligible. So, rather than make it a general rule, we've set the rule, if there are exceptions, they need to make sure that they're there with the high school principal ahead of time so we don't find ourselves this hours before graduation trying to figure out whether there's students an honor student or not. So, we think we've got that covered. At your place tonight, as I indicated in background, there's a couple of extra pages to the wellness policy. The wellness policy is really a rewrite of the current 5.62. Two things that I wanted to make sure got added back into this that got left out when I talked to policy review, I realized that we've left that out. Under Roman numeral three, we've added the language back in there about free and reduced price lunch. And then when you get to page seven, page seven, we talk about safe ways to schools. We had in our old policy a phrase that said, when appropriate, the school corporation will work together with local public works, public safety and/or police departments in those efforts. And as you, as you may recall, we have partnered with those groups in trying to apply for grants to help improve sidewalks on the way to schools. So, I thought for future grant purposes, it would be important to include that language in the policy. 6.07, in, in looking through a request for facility use, we thought we would check with our insurance agent to make sure that the limits that we were carrying on the policy were still current. And he suggested that we make the changes that you see reflected on that. While you don't necessarily approve the appendix, I just wanted to let you know that we will be updating the appendix so that it is consistent with, with policy 6.07. So, that's a quick run through on policies that will, unless we hear questions or concern, we'll bring those back to you next month for a second reading and then adoption.
These pages here, they're, they're a supplement to this wellness policy?
They replace, they replace page three and page seven.
This wellness policy?
That, yeah.
Okay.
Right. And we'll get you, we'll get you that all together. When I discovered it, I have an iPad one. It doesn't compute, doesn't work with this router here. And so, in my frustration, I just thought, I'll, I'll fix that when Cindy gets back. And so, she fixed that for me today and so we'll get that all taken care of next time. Yes, thank you very much, Cindy.
I have just a couple of questions on the wellness policy. Are the school wellness committee and the school health advisory council one and the same?
I'll defer to Dr. Bear.
Yeah, wellness advisory council, wellness committee, it used to be called council. We've changed wellness committee, it's all synonymous though.
Okay. And then that's structured, just how it's laid up, spelled out here in policy so far as the people who are on.
Yes, it's a little more delineated in the new policy. It tells the specific who's there and we've had a wide range of people on that. And there's a paragraph that talks about teachers that are also included as well as wellness.
Yes, community in.
Yep. It has everybody that needs to be included or could be included. It's, it's a pretty, can be a fairly large group, but the committee still desires.
Are we going to be able to eliminate trans fats totally, zero percent?
I think they've already done that. As much as possible, I can talk to Siobhan and get an update on that. At least she's working very diligently to make sure we're in compliance.
I mean, I think that's great if we can.
Yeah, I think so.
But I didn't know if we, if it was possible to do that with.
As far as labels and everything, she asserts to me that that's where we're headed and that's what we should be doing. So, and if she's determined to do that, you better be sure she, it'll happen.
Does this carry over to our sporting events, like the, the prescription for what, what is available?
Yeah, the concession stand?
Yeah, concession stand.
There's a provision in concession stand. We have not gotten into that because that's a different, those are different entity and so.
So, this wouldn't?
No, I don't believe you would address that. It could at some point in time, but I think that's why this is an annual review, which is really good. This is before the original policy said, we get it every three years and this is more of an annual event. So, there's certain things I think we wanted to not tackle. That was in the original policy way back. This is the 10th revision we worked on with our wellness committee. It went through 10 revisions. So, at one point in time initially, Mr. Taylor, there was a provision to look at concessions and we decided not to deal with it because it's really hard to regulate that. And, and we also put into the terminology, to the extent possible, there's sometimes some of these things are in, you cannot make that work at every school. So, we've given some flexibility to the building principal and their leadership, making some determinations. And one of those we did do is also eliminated the concessions because it was just too hard to manage and I think that's something outside of policy.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, then, are there any persons in the audience wishing to make the board aware of any suggestions, ideas or comments? Seeing none, superintendents, discussion groups reports. Seeing none, principals, directors reports. Director personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of items. At your seats, place of seating tonight is a copy of the maintenance, custodial and mechanics agreement. This is passed, I think, late December. Unfortunately, Mr. January meeting and we failed to get that out last month, so I apologize for the lateness of that, but it does nonetheless provide you some background. Should you have any questions on that particular agreement and/or the teacher do it, feel free to contact me with any questions you may have. But it delineates the agreement we have and working relationship we have with both of our federation and our mechanics, maintenance and custody of the union. We are in the process of next, we'll be getting some interviews for the Eastview Principal Position. Our committee will be meeting Thursday, tomorrow, Tuesday.
Thursday.
Thursday this week, not tomorrow, it was Wednesday, right? And organize that. And then our associate director at WTCC will be meeting with that group tomorrow for organization purposes. So, we'll, down the road, we'll bring you some recommendations and then in there. And then finally with that, with all the retirements, we'll be hitting recruiting trails beginning at first part of April to look at all the retirements we have and look at some staffing issues and meeting with folks as far as what the needs may be. And happy to say that I have a couple of principals who've joined me on a couple of these trips this year, which is really great because they have a vested interest and gives them some great experiences as well. So, we'll be sharing that responsibility come, come beginning of April. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Burchett.
Thank you. Director of Finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just want to remind the board members of our special meeting next Tuesday at 5 o'clock. Two brief items, we will be, I will have a recommendation for the mowing of the handful of properties that we do outsource. And also tomorrow at 1 o'clock, we'll be accepting bids for the majority of the summer projects. So, I will have a recommendation for those. So, those two items will be presented to you next Tuesday evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant superintendents report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just give you an update on the assessment. March is like, not just March Madness for basketball, it's March Madness in assessment. And this is our big high stakes assessment. Today was the first day of the I-Step, the, the writing component of the, the I-Step assessment. They did extend the window because we could have started a week ago, but we took advantage of, because of our snow days, even though we have extended days. So, I felt we're, we're prepared and ready to go and they started those. Next week is IRE 3. And last weekend, this week, as I mentioned earlier, the new assessment for the high school, students for the Accuplacer, college and career readiness. So, it's March Madness in the assessment world too. So, and we are doing everything we possibly can to make it a good experience for our students and our teachers.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Well, I just wanted to defend myself. There was a comment made about the lack of technology when we were in high school. I want everyone to know that I did take a class in high school called computerized math. Our device was a teletype that was, that was hooked to a mainframe at the Illinois Institute of Technology in Chicago. And I believe that computer could have probably filled this room, but we did have computerized math even back in our ages. Mr. Ely mentioned during his presentation, my big campus. We are, we're in the process of trying to get you involved in my big campus. Dr. Reiki and I have been talking about the kinds of things that we might want to put in folders that you would have, only you would have access to. We've had conversations about what are we doing curricular wise, what are some things that are happening? And so, we are working to get you access to, to your own folder of my big campus and we'll be sharing some information with you on that. And then just to piggyback on what Janie had to say, we will have a 445 executive session next Tuesday to meet someone that, that we plan to be bringing to you for employment purposes also on the 18th. And so, with that, I think that's all I got this evening.
Okay, anyone have for the good of the cause?
I've got something. I don't know if, if you guys have seen, but my daughter's, I've got two daughters go to Maplewood. And the teachers had done a test busters thing. And I'll tell you what, the kids just thought that was the greatest thing in the world. And it actually got, you know, my daughter's first year for us, it's her third year. So, she was, you know, super excited about it and I just thought that was, it was hilarious. If you guys haven't seen it, you need to watch it.
Well, what was nice was seeing it on the Indianapolis news.
Yeah.
It was, the news is so depressing normally and negative that it's like, oh my gosh, it's Connersville and look what they've done.
It was hilarious.
So, is it, yeah. And was Dr. Reiki in that by chance?
No. She was the girl.
Somebody was showing their superhero skills and it looked like you. It was, yeah, it really wasn't. It was not you. Well, I see, it was, I quit, but I thought maybe you were part of it, so.
The video, it was really cool. The kids really enjoyed it.
I had a chance to be there through most of, most of that presentation and, and the staff, first of all, did, did an outstanding job and the kids, the kids really enjoyed it.
And my daughter came home, she said, you gotta watch this. She was telling me, you gotta type in YouTube, get on this and I'll, just they, they just thought it was great.
Well, it's proof that we do do good things here at the county school corporation and, and that's just the tip of the iceberg and it happens because we have people who go above and beyond Call of Duty.
And they have fun.
And they have fun.
Well said.
Any other comment? Do I hear a motion? We adjourn.
Salute.
Do I hear a second? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.